It's off. And now the mic is on.
Now the mic is on. Okay, so folks can hear us now that are in the room. I'm going to send a note to my chat here. I'm just asking if they can hear us okay?
Yeah.
In my chat. Linda. She raised her hand.
She says yes.
Thank you, Linda.
Oh, right.
Thank you both. Okay, great. So everyone's coming into the meeting, which is wonderful. They can hear us talking. And now I can just kind of make that a little... I have to really get that out in order for her to do her slide show.
Yeah, but it might be a little dark enough, yeah? There you go.
And I'm just going to assume everything's okay while she does her slide show.
And we will be here.
Okay.
Something doesn't...
Maybe you two.
Is there somebody on the far end you could test the mic with?
They just... I just did with...
I mean, were they speaking?
Yes, during public hearings. Maybe I could ask somebody right now.
Unmute themselves and try.
Yeah, let's do that.
And then check your volume.
Perfect. Can I get out of this?
A little bit escape, yeah.
Escape. Back to the beginning. Okay.
Look at you. Hey, look at that. Cool. You started talking and you got brought into the...
If I unmute your mic, would you be... Anyone raising their hand for me?
Not yet.
If anyone in the waiting room can hear me... Oh, I have a... Thank you. Let's see. I've got Christie. Hang on, Christie. I am going to...
Over.
I am going to allow mic. Okay. And Christie...
I just unmuted. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Great.
Can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Fantastic. Great, I really appreciate you being willing to test your mic for us.
No problem.
Okay, I'm going to disable your mic again, and we will hear from you soon. Thank you.
Good.
Right? And that's how I'll do it when we go to testimony. We'll just unmute, unmute. How do I sign up to provide testimony? We will...
You. I like the sound of continuing. Yes.
Would you be... I had Sue's nice presentation up, and now it looks like it Googled us, went away. That is it. All right, I am going to view as slide show.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I do. So I might keep this up until I... When do we start? Public comment person to begin? At the same time? I'm just going to learn from you. I'm going to check myself and believe in you. That's fantastic. It is, because I'm trying to do this and then... I don't put a white thing like paper that we can use or people do use. And they have a copy machine, Sue, too, if you want, Sue.
We can also make copies.
We've already been filled out, and we don't have time to print. So what if we use lined paper? Then we can keep that. And folks are in the room, and they can hear us. Hi, everybody.
Hello. Good next to me. Hello. Welcome to Evening Grace. I'm excited to have this. We're very excited that there's been a smart startup. We're looking forward to the evening. We do have crowd managers here, but it's not as packed as we thought it might be. But so your exits are there, there, here, here. There are a couple of people, Mike and Jenna, to help manage crowds. Just by chance, anything, it's crazy. We do have out here, we have a couple of areas where you can pick up some water, like a granola bar, if you like one. But again, thank you for coming. We're looking forward to an evening full of discussion about redistricting in Vermont. So thank you so much.
My name is Sue McCormick, and I'm going to be the moderator tonight for the meeting. And before I turn it over to the co-chair of the task force, I just wanted to say a couple of words about the meeting. First, I really want to thank Matt and Greg and Bridget and other folks here for hosting us. We really appreciate it. They worked hard to get everything set up and help us with the technology so we could have a good experience. So we really appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to say is just a word or two about how we've designed this meeting. So we want to hear from all of you. And we know that not everybody likes to get up and talk at a microphone in front of the room. So we designed the meeting so that we're going to do a presentation, and then we're going to have some opportunities in the other room right next door for people to give input about a couple of different questions. And then we'll come back in this room for public comment. And we'll tell you more about what that's going to look like. But I just wanted to let you know in the beginning of the meeting, this is a little bit unusual for what you might expect for a very traditional kind of public hearing. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Edie.
Hey, everybody. Thanks so much for being here. I'm Edie Greenwich. I represent Jericho and Underhill, and I am one of the co-chairs of the task force. And we only have one of us, so he gets to listen to me a lot tonight. I'll do my best to keep him interested. We have a slide that introduces the rest of the task force, and we do have a forum here tonight. So I have to run through open meetings, run through the agenda, run through all of the basic things. But I truly want to thank you for coming out here. We can't do our work without period view. We wish we had the opportunity to hear from you, put some maps together, hear from you again, bottom of the maps, have like a much longer engagement. And unfortunately, there were only four months given to us to do the work. So we're going to do this the best that we can, which is get your input and put it into the maps. The good news is whatever maps we come up with go to the legislature, and they have to decide how they're going to use them. So we're informing work that will be done during the legislative session. So I just wanted to make that really clear upfront, and I'm sure we'll do it on that a couple more times. So... Time, agenda. We have our task force presentation, which is coming up next. Should be not even 15 minutes. Then we're going to have time to get information from you at different stations, and that is going to be in the room right next door. So we'll get up and walk around, you can get something for them, give us all of the information that you want to. Then I need to take my... Thank you, though. I appreciate you noticing how awkward it looked. Then we're going to come back into this space, and we will have time for... I don't know. It's really sticky. We'll have time for a regular... Oh, no, we're going to report out. So Sue, who is, we just said, is going to kind of get the information, collate the information, and share that back out so everybody here knows the general themes of what we heard from the other room. And then there'll be an opportunity for folks to talk at the microphone for those of you that want to. Public speaking isn't something that everybody likes, and so you don't have to. There are lots of ways to give us your information, but we will hear from you at that point. And that's going to happen from 5:35 till 6:25. So there's plenty...
7:00.
Oh, we have different times. It's way past that. Say again? 7:00 to 8:00. And then we will close. If we have a very long sign up... So you have to sign up if you want to do the public hearing to talk to us. If we have a very long list, we can add 30 minutes to the meeting, but at that point, we have to close it. So we'll let you know. You can stay as long as you want. I will stay until the very end of this, and then we'll head out. If there's something else, we're going to do the presentation. Okay. I'm blocking. I know I'm so tall, I don't really block people, but I'm going to move to the side anyway. Next slide. So why are we doing this? So Act 73 is a 100-word, seven-page law. This task force that we're working on is eight pages of that law. So there's an awful lot in this law, but we're going to work from those eight pages. And our job is to hear from you to inform the work that we're doing. We're asking you, please, and we're going to do the same. When you talk, be brave. Don't feel like you need to be perfect. We want to hear what you need to say. It doesn't have to be the exact words, right? That's for the lawyers to write in on paper. That's not for us. That's not how we communicate. It's okay to disagree, but keep the focus on the ideas. Don't get mad at the person who's saying it. We don't have to all agree, but we do have to be able to hear each other. Shared goals, let's keep those in mind. We all want schools to be amazing. Just keep that in mind. We're going to do our best to listen, to understand what people are trying to tell us, and we're going to share the time. And when we're talking about that, when we do public comment, we have two minutes. We have a two-minute time limit, and somebody, maybe me, will be having the timer. And as you get close to that two-minute, we'll hold that timer. Okay? Actually, this is an awful lot of talking for you. So if you are on the task force, please go and please stand up. Now that Dave just sat down. So with us tonight, do you want to just holler out your name, or do you want me to introduce you?
I'm Dave Walton from Rock.
Dan Foster, George, I'm from Barlin.
Thank you, Harrison. I live in Rapid Park. I just want to thank you. Thanks to my colleagues for having this session here. We only had two minutes, and we didn't finish it, but now we got one. Thank you.
I'm Beth Quibby from Linden.
Dr. Wilkman.
Ms. Ruppert.
And we have four task members who could be with us tonight from Burlington, Grand Isle, St. John's, Barry, and Chris Brown. Barry, from Barry. So... So Act 73, this is the intent language. And it's to ensure each... This is the only slide I'm going to read to you, I promise. To ensure each student is provided substantially equal educational opportunities that will prepare them to thrive in a 21st century world. It's the intent of the General Assembly to work strategically, intentionally, and thoughtfully to ensure that each incremental change to Vermont's public education system provides strength and support to its only constitutionally required governmental service. So Act 73, like I said, we're only eight of the pages. There is also work that the Commission on the Future of Public Education is doing. There is a voting boards work group. The Agency of Education has rules on different things that they have to put in place. The State Board of Education has rules that they have to put in place. And then there is a state aid for school construction advisory board. And that's only really scratching the tip of the iceberg for what this law does or hasn't been. So our job, our only job, is to consider and recommend what new school district boundaries and configurations should be for Vermont, and we have to do that by December 1st. So that's what we're working on. It is not our job to close schools. It is not part of what we're doing at all. The Commission on the Future of Public Education is looking at, if the school is to be closed, what that should look like and what the process should be. But it's not something that we're doing. So just to be really clear, okay? We get asked that a lot. Are you closing my school? We're not closing schools. It's not our job. So what we do have to do is consider all of these things. Boundaries, transportation barriers. We know, I told you I was going to read another slide to you. But we have to consider all of these things as we're looking at what the new map should look like or could look like. We can put that back up again later if you want. So why? Why do we have to do this? So we have fewer students in Vermont every year across the state. In some areas, they're not seeing a decline. In other areas, we're seeing a big decline. But overall, we have fewer students in the state. We have old buildings that need to be fixed. I'm sure you've seen that across your schools here. I know it in my area, too. Students need a whole lot more. We have to do so much more for kids, and school is not what it used to be for sure when I was growing up. We have noticed every time we look at this that the educational opportunities across the state vary greatly. Some kids have opportunities that other kids don't. And we want to make sure that we're providing equitable education to kids everywhere in Vermont. And everything costs more, which means our property taxes are higher, and nobody links back. So that's why we were tasked with this job. And... And, you know, it's complicated, right? It's really hard right now. We don't know what's happening federally. Is there an agency of education? What are they doing? What department of education, right? We don't know at the federal level. Trust among citizens and government is low. I don't have to tell you that. I'm on the government side. And everybody's worried about what this could look like in their area for their kids and for their community. So this is... We're in a hard spot. I'm not asking for your, you know, for you to feel any certain way. Just saying, we know we're in a bad spot. It's just where we are today. Okay, so we convened August 1st. Our report is due December 1st. How? We're beginning to get maps done, you know, timeframe, four months. So we've been meeting a lot. We have eight public meetings. In addition to that, two of those meetings have public hearing sessions after them. We have two public hearings. This is one of them that are outside of that, like, that are outside of that timeframe. We are working in pairs and triples outside of meeting time to get things done, because you can't get that much work done in those eight meetings. And by our next meeting, we hope to have three maps to talk about as a committee. We have created a template, so we're going to look at all the maps through the same perspective, and we're going to decide how they rate against the same criteria. We'll share that information with the legislature, and we'll use that to figure out which map or maps we sent to the legislature. Things that we need to consider besides that very long slide, we can go back to our public comment, public hearings. Commission on the Future of Education put a survey together, and hopefully you've all seen it. If you haven't, we have links to it, and you can click on it in the other room. You can click on that and fill out that survey. The Vermont School Boards Association did a survey of all of the school board chairs across the state, whether they are members of the School Board Association or not, to understand what school districts are doing today. Are they looking at merging with other districts or working with other districts or not? And what do they need for support? We have four meetings like this. This is our second one. So we're going to use it to inform our maps, and we are also going to provide the legislature with all of everything that we learned. So it's not just for us, it's for the 180 people that come together in Montpelier to figure out what the next steps are. Okay, I'm done. You don't have to listen to me anymore.
Thank you, Edie. So now we want to hear from all of you. And for the next half hour or so, we're going to give you an opportunity to provide feedback in a couple of different ways, and then we're going to come back together in this room, and you'll also have an opportunity to offer public testimony. So I want to tell you a little bit about what this next part of the meeting is going to look like. So we have four stations. And each of the stations is... The first three stations are right next door in the other room, and there's going to be a task force member in each of them. So in addition to filling things out, you can also have a conversation, ask questions. At the first station, we're asking people to share some of your concerns about this idea of redistricting, and also to share whether there are things that you think could be opportunities that could happen as a result of a redistricting kind of scenario. At the second station, we're sharing six priorities that the task force identified, and we're going to ask you, what do you think out of those is most important? Then we're going to give you a chance to say how confident you are that redistricting could address those things. Not confident, somewhat confident, very confident. The third station, you have a chance to write a note to the task force. You can say whatever you want. And then the fourth station, which is actually in the back wall of this room, is where you can sign up to offer public testimony later tonight. We want to let you know there's a couple of ways to do this. So one way is we have paper and pens and sticky dots. But we also have a QR code, and Chrissy, if you could put that up, that would be great. And QR code is also all over the room next door, so you don't need to get it in here, but we'll put it in here as well. So all of the questions that we're asking you to provide feedback on, you can also do via an online survey. So there's equal weight, whether you write it on paper or fill out the survey. We're going to look at all the feedback. Again, we're trying to make this work as well for you as we can. Okay? So we take a look at the time. Our last meeting was 4:00 to 6:00. It's on 6:00 to 8:00. So I just want to make sure. So I think we're going to come back together. We're running a little ahead of schedule, which is amazing. So I think we'll come back together about 5:00 or 7:00, okay? And we'll do a quick report out on some of what we're hearing, and then we'll begin the public testimony. Got any questions? So this is one, this is a fantastic question. So someone said, could you show us the maps? So we have something to react to. And I'll just repeat what Edie said earlier. So in a world that the task force wishes were the world they were working in, they would have had a lot more time, and they would have had maps here. And in that room, there'd be maps, and you'd be looking at maps and talking about them. That is not the world they're working in. So they're just starting to figure out what the maps might look like. And so we have some more broad questions so that when they're looking at maps, we can tell them, this is what people... This is what we heard. This is what people's concerns are. This is what their hopes are, do maps address these folks' concerns? So it's not ideal. I know the task force would much rather have maps for you all to look at, but because of the timeframe, it just wasn't a possibility. So...
I'm curious why you're telling this kind of need to achieve...
We'll answer this one question, and then we encourage you all to go into the activity as our task force members, and those activities as well. Can I ask any questions about people in the other room, okay? If we try to send too much of a Q and A, we're not going to hear from you, and that's a big important factor tonight. So Edie, one of the questions we ask you in the room next door is, do you think redistricting can achieve any of the points that are listed in the law that redistricting is designed to fix? So we want to give a review of what you think the legis... The folks who put the... Oh, I should also say, there are a lot of us on the task force that didn't vote for this law. I voted against it, and a number of other people who are voted against it. But we are working with good faith and with fidelity and blah, blah, hard work to put something together that makes sense for the future of education in Vermont that's good for all kids and on task speakers. And we're working really hard to see if there are any maps at all that can do that for the state. And so we're hopeful that we can come up with something. We have some amazing minds on the task force. Some just brilliant people with amazing education knowledge, who have visited other schools in the state. And so we're hoping that we can come up with something that will work. We don't have maps to even figure that out. So we're going to go with best intentions, and we're going to see where that takes us. How about we bring... And we go into the other room. Before we do anything, if you're a task force member, put your hand up or stand up or something. So there are a bunch of us around. If you have questions, come find one of us. I'm going to stay right here for a little bit, not next to the lightbulb. Come find one of us, and we'll ask... We'll answer questions, and I will answer questions for the brittle host you are.
Okay. Kim Gleason had her hand up. Can I let her comment? Just give me a moment. I'm going to allow her mic and her camera. Okay, Kim.
Hi there, folks. I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt at all, but I heard you say, put your hand up if you're a task force member. And I know that that introduction early on, Edie, also mentioned some of us not able to be there in person. But I'm happy to be here online and also to experience the online version of this myself. Thanks to all the folks for being here. That was it. Thank you.
Before 7:00, and it won't continue long. So I'd like you to go into the rooms that may be... And if you have a phone, bring your phone, because you can use some of your input via an online survey.
I think the front of session is certainly going to begin long.
Hey everybody. Thank you so much for participating. I'm gonna try to give a quick snapshot of what we're hearing so far tonight, both in the room and on the survey. This is just a really quick snapshot, so it may change after we take a deeper look. But I just want to share back a few of the things that we've heard from you. So in terms of concerns, a lot of people are concerned that this effort at redistricting could cause more harm than good if it's not done well. People are concerned about loss of choice. There's a lot of concern in the room and online about travel time to school and transportation. And people have said they're worried that past attempts to fix these issues by this day haven't been successful. The other thing we've heard from several people is their concern that one of the key drivers of education cost is healthcare. And not sure how this would impact that. There were some hopes too. Some people felt that some kind of redistricting could result in more opportunities for kids, more programs. And then also, there could be more efficiency. And a lot of those comments had the idea, if done well. And they also talked about, um, they could see that these opportunities could be good for kids if there were still ways for communities to maintain their community connections. At the second station, we asked about priorities. So the two clear top priorities had to do with improved quality of education and greater equity. So kids, more kids having access to similar opportunities. Um, there were some concern about cost and lowering costs, but it wasn't as high of a priority as quality was. And then one of the priorities that got added in the room again was a priority around travel time for students. Um, when we asked you all how confident you are that redistricting could solve the problems? You're not that confident, so we're just going to say that because that's how we felt. There was some confidence around creating more opportunities and better efficiencies. But this kind of tracks with what the Commission on the Future of Public Education heard when they talked with people last spring. There's, as Edie said, there's just not very much trust between communities and government right now. And so there's just a lack of confidence. And then, um, letters that were going through. And I think, I'll just say one letter from a teacher that I don't really understand why we're talking about redistricting instead of addressing the cost of healthcare. And in the survey, a lot of the letters talked about people, uh, they mentioned London Dairy specifically, just intentionally moving to a smaller, like, that was really important to them. So those are some of what we heard, a little snapshot, and again, we thank you for participating. And before we open it up to the public comment, I think Edie just wants to clarify one thing that was said during the presentation, and we'll open it up for comment.
Hi, thanks. So I probably should have been much more clear at the very beginning of the meeting. Um, it sounds like most people in the room saw a map that our committee saw two meetings ago, which is loosely based on where the CTEs are today. Loosely, because some of the, one of your communities got moved from one place to another.
CTE.
Oh, thank you, career technical education. That's so hard to do in education is to remember that there are, so thank you. So the career technical education centers in Vermont all have different catchment areas where students from certain school areas, school regions, school districts goes with certain ones. And so we looked at a map that was based on that, with one district getting moved to a different spot. It was a super preliminary thought about how a map could look. It is not a map that is currently being considered. The folks who were working on that took information from us and are going to come back with something that is very, is different at our next meeting. The last meeting, we looked at a map that was based on boards of cooperative educational services, which is taking a lot of services and bringing them together in a way that all, yeah, regionalizes them. To get some, so that's another map that we are going to get back. And then another map that we're going to get back is based on regional high schools. So based on current population centers, where people live, where do we need these regional high schools? And what does it look like? So we have a high school that has tech and everything right there available for all students across the state because it's not everybody has that. So those are the three maps we're expecting to get back. Well, they have them at our next meeting. And then the people who have been working on them, again, folks are working out of the meetings in twos and threes. We'll have time to revise them and then bring them back to our second to last meeting. We'll say, yep, or nope, those are going forward, those aren't going forward, and we could send all three of them, we could send one of them, we could say. And we, I don't know if we could say none of them work. I don't know if we could do that. We could say this one works the best, but these are the 800 things that don't work until these other things happen. So I think that was the other thing I wanted to say is when we're talking about a report, I'm thinking a report. I'm not thinking like three pieces of paper that are mapped. I'm thinking of things that say, we would have to do these 20 things to make this work. We would have to use 50 things to make this work. We would have to do, you know, get rid of our mountains to make this work. I don't know, maybe, so, so, but that's what our committee is working on. This is not drawing lines on a map. This is deep dive, what does it take to make education work better in Vermont? So again, thank you for being here and sorry that I didn't say it at the beginning.
Did I ask you to see your question?
Yes.
So you referenced, you'll have, sorry, talk, okay. Uh, you referenced that you'll have the maps at the next meeting. The meeting you're referring to, it's, it's your meeting, not another.
Not a public hearing, right? It's the meeting on the 28th in Winuski. And then we have a public hearing at the end of that.
And that's a month.
The next public hearing is next week in Rutland on.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
On the 22nd.
Will there be maps there?
No, we will not have maps at the next public.
Will there be a public hearing?
This is the last question that I want to hear.
It's fine, fine.
Okay.
Will there be a public hearing where there are maps?
Um, there is, well, the Winuski public hearing, there will be maps that we will present, but it will have, the public hearing will be exactly like this one. So it will mean the same stations, all the public hearings are identical. So there's no public hearing that folks can just say, hey, that's a good map, or hey, that's a horrible map. But we want to hear from you. We have our email, send us a note after you see the maps. Send us a note between the third, the sixth and seventh meeting, when people are working on these maps, to say, the email is.
ADM.
DM.
Dash redistricting.
What are you doing? ADM dash redistricting at vermont.gov. Um, and you can also go to the website. The task force has a website where everything is, um, uh, all laid out there, all the past meeting information, um, public comments. So I would recommend you go there as well, and it's the Agency of the Administration's website under Boards and Commissions. Thank you.
Maps published on.
Yes, all the maps will be published on that website.
So I'll just, um, let you know that we have a slide with the email address that we'll show at the end of the meeting. And just to say a little more about the process and the timing, I hope I can get all of these dates right. So on the 22nd, in Rutland, there will be another public hearing, exactly like this one. On the 28th, there will be a full day, six hour task force meeting. And that's the meeting where the three maps that have been worked on will be discussed in depth. At that meeting, the task force will decide what changes might be made, may need to be made. They may decide to take one of the maps off the table. At the end of that meeting, there will be the final public hearing, which will be exactly like the one tonight. On November 10th, the task force will come back together and look at the maps again after another round of revision. That meeting is really important. That's when they're going to decide, um, what to recommend to the legislature. So if you want to comment on maps between the 28th and the 10th of November, it's a really good timeframe. And then the final commission meeting, that's on November 17th, the members will really be talking about the report. What maps they want to include and what they want to say to the legislature. So that's the timeframe. And the maps all get posted on the task force webpage, so you can look at that. And just to let you know, some of them are going to be really long, you know, many, many pages. In order to fill out the templates, which help the committee decide if they think these maps are worthy.
So I'm going to sit up here, I'm going to have my phone, I'm going to be timing, maybe someone from the task force wants to sit with me. I'm going to do my best to call your name without slaughtering it. My name's Edie, it gets slaughtered all the time, so I apologize in advance. Um, our first person is Heather Stevenson. I leave the mic up here.
Need some help?
I actually was, um, I'm going to be there to help you. I don't want to stay. And I get, can I get tagged now if I don't want to drop the mic? Not being able to use.
Amen.
Thank you. Heather Stevenson, community member, um, of an eight and 11 year old in London Dairy. Thank you for your consideration. When mapping, please recognize and respect communities, their cultural centers, family legacies, and local traditions. For mountain towns, some of which are recognized by the state as disadvantaged towns, all defined as rural, towns without high schools or local infrastructure, school choice feels essential, a lifeline. It fills in the gaps. School choice functions differently across from one. In the iconic and green school district, part of the BRSU, our sending towns of Dandies, Thunderland, Dorset, Langrow, London Dairy, Manchester, Mount Tabor, Rho, Weston, also connected to my Monstrant, it works exceptionally well. In alignment with public schools. Here, it's not about imagining something better. We're acknowledging that it is what works best for our kids. Some of these towns will disappear under some of the current scenarios. This is not a fear-based statement, it's grounded in lived-in experience, supported by public commons, knowing from past mergers of the complexities of daily life in our unique geography. Acknowledging the long-term effects of rural population decline, yet in these noted mountain towns, populations have remained relatively stable despite these many challenges. Many of us live here because of school choice, because of ensuring access to both public and independent schools, because students are not all the same. And because our independent schools here accept all children, including those with disabilities and disabilities. Someone on the task force asked, why doesn't everyone ensure this? Beyond the fact that this is not a problem this task force was created to solve, it raises a fundamental question. If public schools are not overseen, how can anyone guarantee equity for every child? In our towns, people have made deliberate decisions to live in communities that value choice. Our rural towns may never be the majority, but that does not make our voice less valuable. Currently, what I actually hear is that you will get map recommendation wrong and risk unraveling the very fabric of the communities that your maps are meant to serve. Please keep our communities as part of the BRSU.
I just want to quickly preface this, that I wrote this prior to your explanation about the task force doing a lot more deeper work on the existing map, so bear with me a little bit. Um, good evening. My name is Selena Cobb, I live in London Dairy, and I currently have a 12 and seven year old that's working youth school. I, of course, like most, understand the daunting task that you have graciously volunteered for. I thank you for your efforts. I am here today to express my concern for the dangers of dividing current districts and eliminating school choice. In regards to the current CTE map, you have divided our school district and supervised reunion with no apparent regard to historic and current community connections, regional services, or athletic programs. You have not studied our transportation and employment patterns and practices. I understand that only one of your maps has mandated to consider these items, but this current map's only success for our community is that it moves us 10 minutes closer to a CTE. A CTE that our students who have school choice already have access to, without being dissected from our current district and community. On Friday, Chris said that if we take away choice, some of these towns will go away. He was interrupted to discount his opinion on the matter, and it was stated that it was a fear-based perspective. This is not fear mongering, it's fact. My husband and I are both small business owners based out of London Dairy and serve the mountain towns in all of Manchester. We have intentionally resided in this community for the last 13 years for the sole purpose of our children's education and opportunity that comes from school choice in rural areas. If this decision to exist, we see no future in Vermont for our family. This act states that we support opportunities for local elementary schools as well. Repeating school choice and separating London Dairy and those alike from its current district will only accelerate the declining student population and bore all efforts to achieve the goals of Act 73. The problem stated in this task force created on land 13 states do no harm, it will no more works, no disruption for the sake of disruption. When developing your next map and finding the existing, I please ask that the task force look at a little deeper at what they can do to achieve this goal for the sake of preserving community that is ingrained in all of our lives and the lives and best interests of our children. Thank you.
Hi, women said it beautifully, but, um, my name is Beth Schoenfeld. I am from Dover, Vermont. I have a senior at Vermont Academy. Our family relocated to Dover, Vermont, 2020. Initially as a temporary measure during the COVID pandemic, we decided to become permanent residents after learning about the excellent educational options available in setting towns like Dover. Our son attended Hilltop Montessori in Bradmore from Middle School and Burnburn for High School, both of which were well suited to his needs. Since then, we've been active members of the community and taxpayers in Vermont. I have attended every school board annual meeting since moving to Vermont and have consistently witnessed strong support for maintaining Dover status as a setting town. I also introduced an article at a Dover school board annual meeting affirming our commitment to opposing discrimination and keeping our system intact, which passed with near unanimous approval. Many families in our community benefit from the system making educational choices that best fit their children's needs. This, there is a misconception in Montpelier that requiring students from setting towns to attend a designated public school will increase public school enrollment at the expense of independent schools. This is inaccurate. Without school choice, our family would not have moved to Vermont, and many others share this sentiment. Eliminating school choice would reduce educational opportunities, discourage families from relocating to the area, and negative relief of impact the law can make. At a time when many American institutions are being dismantled, I encourage Vermont state government to preserve this historic and beneficial system. Maintaining school choice in setting towns is essential for attracting new families and supporting rural communities.
Unlike all these other women, I did not prepare something, so this is just off. Um, I'm Heidi Ross, I'm the business manager for Wyndham Central Supervisory Board right here. And I just want to say, we have quite a diverse group of school districts in our S U. Um, and they all bring lots of different struggles as we are facing what's coming up. Um, I think a theme that I've heard over and over again is transportation. I think that there's a real concern, our, our communities live in mountains and valleys, and as the redistricting committee makes decisions, I just want to implore you to make sure you're really thinking about accessibility for the students. Being able to stay within communities where they can access sports and theater and after-school programs. I'm real concerned with high schools being so far from where kids are, are growing up and learning, that they won't be able to participate, and that's going to cause more inequity than actually creating equity. So I just want to make sure that you're thinking about that, travel times for kids on buses, and, and families being able to, and that one to continue to be involved. Thank you.
I'm Allison, I'm a Western resident, originally from Manchester, I'm a third generation VBA alum. I chose to settle my life in Western, knowing that my children still had a choice to attend VBA. And I agree, and I agree that people will move from this area if our school choice is removed. I think it's important to acknowledge our ethos. Floodbrook community is part of the Greater Manchester community for generations. Our community travels for sports, our children who attend Floodbrook intermix for dances with the whole of the BRSU. If removed, our current dis, if removed from our current district, it will be in no way beneficial for our children or our families in this area, noting that jobs, childcare, et cetera, et cetera, will also be disrupted. How will we operate, how we operate in the BRSU works well, please don't change what we have built here and the community that we have all built together.
So Mary, here's up, and Jay Hatchidorian is asking that.
Yep.
That's good.
Perfect.
Hi, my name is Mary Jo DeGrandy. I'm from Southern London Dairy, Vermont. I have a second grader, you know, a sixth grader at Flood. I have a second grader, a sixth grader at Floodbrook School. First, I want to thank the task force for your time and effort, and I appreciate the complexity of your task. And I'm sympathetic to being almost pressured or under to offer suggestions with extremely and likely unreasonably compressed time limit. I want to make a couple of points here. One is about educational equity. My husband and I chose to purchase our home in Southern Londonary in 2010, specifically to be situated in a school district that would encompass BBA and to be awarded school choice, allowing us to match our children's educational needs to the best fit available schools as is a longstanding tradition in this rural region. While the idea of school choice has been denigrated by some in the educational community, the reality for our region is that school choice has allowed a rural and socio-economically diverse area of the state that has long existed without a public high school to thrive educationally. The public-private partnership between the Manchester and mountain town communities and local independent schools such as BBA via the town supervision system has provided educational opportunities that rival those of much larger urban communities. In fact, research suggests that charter schools, such as most available in Burlington and many independent schools operating at a lower cost than traditional public schools while achieving comparable or better academic outcomes. The first of the task force's proposed map separates our mountain town communities from the rest of the BRSU community in a way that is incongruent with the reality of how our families and children actually live. Community cohesion is hugely significant for future academic outcomes. Our children from a young age participate in daycare, extracurricular athletics, arts, church, medical, and mental health services, and educational activities in and around the Greater Manchester region. Geographically, residents of the mountain town communities travel west almost daily with services most practically and safely accessed in that direction. The connection between Manchester and the mountain towns is also reflected in our business community with our local chamber of commerce called Manchester and the Mountains, Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Very good.
Thank you.
Jay, and then Flo. My name is Jay Hatchidorian. I live in Wind Hall. My wife and I purchased our home in 2018 when my son was two. And we purchased in Wind Hall because she drove by the mountain school at Wind Hall and said, "I want my child to do it there." We knew nothing about the school. We knew nothing about it being private. We knew nothing about a choice. My wife often jokes that she manifested a global pandemic for us to move here. So we moved when our son was four and put him in school at the mountain school. Cut to, he's now a fifth grader. We have a second child who will hopefully be going there next year. We're fully embraced by the community. We put in, made our roots here as we learned about school choice and the opportunity to go to BBA and the great educational opportunities we would have being residents of Wind Hall. I'm a soccer coach. I coach for the local West River Soccer. I work at Strat Mountain. We opened a business in Wind Hall. So we have planted our roots here in a large part because of the opportunities that were offered by the opportunity to go to a school and having school choice. My fear is that we will have to reassess some of the choices that we've made. If maps change it, if we lose school choice, if our child is going to be blessed somewhere else, we'll have to second-guess some of the choices we may possibly move. I know I've spoken to a lot of other families who feel very similar that this could potentially erode some of our towns and people moving. I think one of the speakers said that earlier, and I've heard that a lot from women. So I think keeping these mountain towns together, I think, maintaining the communities that we've built would be great. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Dwight Morum. I serve on the River Valleys district and also on the London Central S U. Thank you to the task force. I realize this is extremely difficult and more thankful than anything else, school board. But yeah, one of the things that I'm concerned about, and also our district is concerned about, is the loss of local control. And creating these larger districts certainly has the chance to actually remove those local school boards that you guys go to or participate in and have a larger school board that would be making those decisions about our district for us. I recognize changes we've made. I think we all do, serving our school board. Our numbers are declining. However, I feel, and I think our school board voted, that we should be the ones to make those decisions and make those choices for ourselves. One of the options that the task force has is to create supervisory unions, which is actually required to be, so have SUs as part of the map. We're recommending from our district that we remain in an S U. And listening to some of the people just now, I recognize staying in an S U would allow us to change school choice as well, in addition to making difficult decisions about our schools and buying and closing those kind of things. So I urge the task force to take a good look at SUs and to keep us in this area as supervisor. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Allison Celester. I'm from Springfield. And this is my 26th year as a public school teacher here in Vermont. So one of your things to address is the uneven access to educational opportunities. I'm from Springfield. It took me almost 40 minutes to get in my own private vehicle. One of my concerns, meaning that opportunity, I mean, when I involve those of us, the equity for my students to get to their own education will be severely impacted. I have concerns around students getting to after-school programs, those who will have the opportunity to get to school in private vehicles, whether by their caregiver or with friends, will be able to get to after-school programs. They'll be able to purchase paying sports and none above and wherever they want. Those who are going to be relying on school transportation will not be able to participate. I have a huge concern, especially me and Springfield, where most of my students already ride the bus for over 40 minutes in town. Whether, and I found one of the sickos outside saying, for the younger children, and I agree, I do not want my kindergarteners riding on the bus for 40 minutes. I do not want my 13-year-old middle schoolers riding the bus for 40 minutes. So it's an equity issue for all students. Another one of your bullet points was about the rising cost. Healthcare is the largest cost of public education. Until we address healthcare, it is going to continue to rise and rise and rise. That is not your job. But again, until we address the healthcare of our employees, I am one of those employees. I'm also a taxpayer. We need to address that. Thank you.
Kimberly is next. I think it says Malcolm Pamblin. Is that Malcolm is on deck? Careful, please. Thank you.
Hello, nice meeting.
Hi. Good for you. Thank you.
So my name's Kimber Lanker, and I'm from Land Grove. And I have one daughter in the education system here. Vermont cannot have quality in education due to the wildly different circumstances throughout our state. So we should instead strive for equity for all students, have the best possible education outcomes. Educational opportunities available to students in Mount Mansfield would never be available to students in our rural communities. It could never be equal. Having access to school choice has allowed our community to provide an equitable, high-quality education for our own children, too. In fact, if having school choice is an issue for communities that don't, if our having school choice is an issue for communities that don't have it, i.e. lack of equity, they should have school choice as well. We are members of the Teconic and Green School District, and we want to maintain our relationship with our supervisory union, the BRSU. This allows us to maintain equity in school choice. Also, please keep in mind that these changes should be incremental, for the language in this act, not monumental. It seems like the amount of time afforded for fleshing out these ideas is insufficient. It seems like we're trying to ram these changes through. There are no maps to look at for feedback, and there are no numbers behind whether this would even be of financial benefit to us. I'm happy to see that there will be additional options for public comment. After-maps are available, so we can give feedback before they go into provision. Thank you.
Yeah. Then Stephanie. Looks like Flanagan?
Yep.
On deck.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm Alannah Hammond on the resident request. I've had two children that have gone through Floodbrook and BBA. And I would want to say that I think that we should maintain the ability to have school choice. With regards to redistricting, it wasn't all that many years ago that we went from the Floodbrook School District to Teconic and Green. So we are already a larger school district than we were 10 years ago. I'm not sure that splitting up Teconic and Green would be beneficial. And also, my other concern, too, is that if you're looking at redistricting so that public schools will get more students, I don't see that as being equitable, especially for the students that are in the mountain towns. I feel that if we're being forced to vote public schools, that would be a detriment to the independent schools. As other people have said, BBA functions basically as a public school, even though it's independent because they accept everybody. And the education there, I feel, is better than what they could probably get most of the other public schools, not to disparage them. But I feel it would be taking away an opportunity for our students to get the best education they could. And the fact that parents can choose from any of the independent and public schools within an hour's drive, basically, from the mountain towns, we already have a good option available. And I don't think that should be taken away. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Wadsworth is on deck.
Hi. Thank you so much for all you are doing. I know we have a very, very tough job to do, and I appreciate you all doing it with care and consideration. So my name is Stefania Murest Flanagan. I live in Londonary. I have a seven, four, and two-year-old, so this is definitely going to affect me and my kids in all of our communities. I urge the committee to give serious consideration to keeping the mountain towns through Londonary, Weston, Land Grove, and Wind Hall within our current district, the Bennington, Brennland Supervisory Union, in whatever larger configuration that may emerge. As Superintendent Randy Lowe and the BRSU school board stated in her open letter to the committee, approximately 95% of our students from these towns attend schools to the west, primarily Burnburn Academy. Given that we have high school choice, this overwhelming statistic demonstrates a clear and sustained amendment from our taxpayers and families to remain aligned with the Manchester area. By the committee's own stated guidelines, considerations such as geography, traffic patterns, student disruption, and natural community connections should inform district alignment. This proposal that we have looked at, that is now not a map that we're looking at, but is still a map that we're looking at, did not pass that criteria. The suggested reconfiguration would require many students to travel farther and across more challenging terrain, creating unnecessary hardship and instability and be maximally disruptive. I moved to Londonary because my husband went to Burnburn, and we wanted to live in a rural community with access to great education, like Floodbrook School and Burnburn. And many of us from these communities choose to live there precisely for this school choice. These schools are integral to our sense of place and community identity. Given these factors and considering that there is no representation from our BRSU on this committee from our region, I respectfully ask the committee to reconsider this decision in light of educational, logistical, and community impact it would cause. Thank you.
And Declan Sullivan, next.
I'm Betsy Wadsworth. I am Stratton. Here's my family, husband's family, grew up here, graduated here, me, Lynn, and Greg. But my husband and I are broker in real estate. My husband employs Silver Fifty employees here in Stratton. And I've been fighting since my kids are 29 and 27. And it started at the mountain school, which I don't know if anybody knows the real history of the mountain school, but it started because the school was public and it's failing students. And the parents and teachers or the community of Wind Hall and Stratton saw this opportunity to dissolve that public school because it was failing our students and build this independent school where we then had choice and our children got there. And it was a wonderful experience for my kids. And my kids went off to BBA. And my son went off to BBA for his freshman year, but then went to SMS because it was the right place for him, because we had choice. I ask this task force to recognize that these are our stats in Stratton. 9.5% of our students go to school that you want to redistrict us to, based on these maps, which I'm well seeing in this room and why we're all here and we're fighting against. And I just hope that the task force asks the parents, "Why don't we, we've made a choice to live where we live." As a real estate broker, I can tell you 17 years of seeing the stats in the towns that don't have school choice, they're not moving there. You know, the state spent tens of thousands of dollars trying to recruit people to come to Vermont to live here. Didn't really work. Had some fraud in it, actually. And we saw a pandemic bring so many people here sitting in this room, came here because of the pandemic, and chose to live in the towns and put real estate dollars in the towns that had choice. We're going to see the task force destroy that if you redistrict us and don't continue with us giving them, given that choice. And it is a real estate impact. It's an economic impact for us. We can't afford it. And I just hope that you recognize that and go to the towns and see where we're sending our kids and not just redistrict us because of some unknown facts.
Say Will Reed?
Yeah.
Will? Okay. It's on deck.
Well, all right. I'm a student. I go to BUHS out of Dover. I'm second every day for school choice. And I know that with all the people here supporting school choice, it's certainly not going to go away, so I don't have to make too much argument for it. But I hear that a lot of you talk about your own community when defending school choice, and that is amazing, to defend your community. But I also want you to look at the big picture and not just argue for school choice for your kids, but for all the kids, for all the kids who want to choose their school and get the best education that they can possibly get. It is very, very important to focus on equity. And when making decisions, you should not just focus on your own children, but you need to focus on everyone. Anyone who just not supports school choice is supporting students not getting their best education. Everyone here, I believe, supports it. I haven't heard anyone who doesn't. So it is a given fact that it is supported here. But I want you, when making arguments, if you don't support it, if you want to get rid of school choice, not just about your own children, but about theirs, about the kids around them, about the students that they know. You must fight for every student, but not just your own when defending school choice. And we're not just fighting for students here, we're also fighting for parents. It's been stated several times that people move to Vermont for school choice. Vermont relies on a number of people moving here. The population's aging, and the only way to solve that is get how people move here. So we certainly need to keep school choice for that reason as well. Getting rid of school choice benefits nobody. It is an absolute necessary fact that we need It is an absolute necessary fact that we need to keep school choice for Vermont to thrive as a state. Thank you.
My papers. Will Reed. And then on deck is Terry Davison Berger? Quaker? Fire? Most.
My name is Will Reed. I'm from Landgrove. As everyone mentioned before, thank you for the hard work under such time to rest. We appreciate it. It's not easy. I wrote you guys earlier an email. I'm going to paraphrase it. I grew up in Peru, and when I initially started drafting an email, I was wondering how do I illustrate in the simplest terms the connections of the mountain towns to the valleys to the west in Manchester and Dorset? And I was suddenly struck with the telephone book that my mom has from 2025 that says, "Manchester and the Mountains." This is the same telephone book that I grew up with 40 years ago. So I can't stress enough the importance of the cultural connection and the economic connection between the mountain and the valley. And I hope that you take that into consideration in your redistricting efforts. Thank you.
And Andrew Saunders is on deck.
Thank you. I'm a bit of an outlier here because I'm here actually to advocate for this public school, Leland and Gray. I'm in Londonderry, so I understand where you guys are at, but we also need to support our local public schools. And I'm not exactly sure. It's not clear how redistricting could impact this high school. But I'm here to say that if the redistricting somehow forces our students to have to go to BUHS or Bellows Falls or even Burnburn, that is not to the benefit of our students. We would lose this community. So I have a unique perspective. I'm both a parent and a teacher here. And so when my husband and I were deciding where we wanted to move, I could have moved back to Londonderry. I could have headed over to Manchester where I went to high school. We very specifically chose to move here to Townsend because we wanted our kids to have a small personalized education, and that is what we're getting. We love it here. My son, who is an eighth grader now, he'll be a freshman next year, he loves it here. My other son is in sixth grade at Townsend Elementary or fifth grade at Townsend. He'll be here for sixth grade. He cannot wait to come here. And the thought that they will not get the opportunity to finish school here is a bit heartbreaking. This is a small, close-knit community, and this school is the heart of our community. This is where generations of people gather to watch kids soccer games. Just today, it went into double overtime, girls' time. Our amazing theater program, our renowned music program. This is where the community comes, people of all ages, people that graduated 40, 50, 60 years ago, come here to gather. And without Leland and Gray, there is no heart to this valley anymore. I'm sorry. I just want to say that this school offers so many opportunities. And I know that the mantra maybe is that bigger is better, but that is not the case here. We offer so many amazing opportunities that other schools do not have, including internships and product-based learning and Project Bike Tech and BEMSA and on and on. We offer our kids so many things. So I just want to give a shout out to the small public schools, and I hope that communities are supporting them as well. Thank you.
Fire? Yes, you're up.
Hi, I'm Andrew Saunders. I'm a dad of a London area.
Mike?
I'm Andrew Saunders. I'm a dad of a London area. My wife and I bought our property 10 years ago and looked at many surrounding towns that did not have school choice. And we could have bought it on our budget. We could have bought it much nicer on the money, to be honest. There's 10 years of work that's gone into making our home what we wanted it to be, what we could afford to be in the district that we're in so that we would have school choice. So I think that there's a lot on the line with making these decisions. I think the heart of communities is really important, and I think where people gather and join for our community is down in Manchester. And there's a lot of community involvement down there that needs to be impacted. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And then Boomer Walker?
Yep.
Hi, I'm Jean Meyer. I live in South Londonderry. We have a nine-year-old who's a genius. And I'm going to skip over so many of the personal stories I have to say, but I've already been taking care of so many other families here. I'm a communications professional. I help companies figure out and people figure out how to communicate, navigate through all kinds of complexities. So I really appreciate the work that you've taken on. And it's very clear that when something this massive happens, every one of us in this room immediately go to, what does it mean to me, 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 right? I'm not going to focus on that. I want us to pull back the lens, and I want to focus on the greater good of the community. So many people stole all my stuff to talk about Thaddeus and how these communities, the mountain towns, are so inextricably linked. Check, 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 underscore, underscore. But here's something really weird and ironic. Sometimes for my job, I have to, by the way, I reincorporated my business in Vermont, and so did my husband, when we made the decision when we were on a journey. So we've got stakes and roots, and we're all in. But I was in the city last week. I was in the subway, the C stop at 97 and Soho Mark West. And there's a billboard that says, "Move to Vermont." It's a new campaign, right? There's a couple, they're like sitting on a lady, looking at their future. And I'm going to tell you, whoever funded that campaign was not paying attention to this issue. There's some discordancy here. And I think you all, I've heard many of you as committee members acknowledge that the process is not deliberate enough, it's not data-driven enough, and it hasn't really applied both the left brain and the right brain. What it has, and I think there's acknowledgement, it's applied arbitrary finger on the map. And what we need to do is apply data, which we all have access to. There's a heat map that would show you how these communities stitch together. Consider that along with all the heartfelt stories that everybody else has shared here. Thanks.
Erica? So on deck is Erica.
My life, I'm disgusted, James pointed. My wife and I purchased where we bought for school choice. I think my biggest concern in all of this is the haste with which all of this is being done. We've heard lots and lots of people talk about decisions they made 20 years ago, and we are now trying to. These are, these are when we make, we have a tool, where are they going to go to college or high school? So I think the biggest thing is to slow down what is the rush here.
On deck is Katie Johnson Appleton?
I'm Erica Bowman, and I'm from Jamaica. I have one daughter that attended Jamaica Village School in London Gray and another one that briefly attended Jamaica Village School, also the mountain school in Wind Hall, and is currently at Stratton Mountain School. And in looking at what we're considering here, I kind of, I understand the drive, the economic drive for this consolidation effort. But as far as real educational opportunity goes, I think that we all seem to be in agreement that diversity of options is really much better than uniformity of options. And, you know, I'm going to use the Stratton on school as an example because that's where my daughter goes now. I think they've honestly, they figured it out because they have a very thematic approach to education where they are famous as skiing and snowboarding sports. But they have a very long day and it's very disciplined, where they come in early, eight o'clock, they ski to a certain kind of time to 12:00. Then they go to school until 5:00, then they practice again at the end of the day, and they go home and do homework. They're very disciplined. They also travel around. To my knowledge, they don't have music or theater, and that is some of the things that you miss out. They don't have this rich diversity of options of what you can do in the day. However, what they do do is really get to know a certain idea and live the world through the lens of that. I think that other schools could really benefit from kind of a more thematic approach rather than uniformity. Because that, we have this opportunity with a small state. We have a lot of diverse interests. We have a lot of diversity in abilities. And there could be, instead of big mega schools, and I know the cost is the big issue, but maybe we need to think about what is, what we value in this community when we talk about cost, not all just found the cheapest option. There's an opportunity there for better and, you know, different types of education. And I just hope that we can, we can think about that when we're, you know, moving forward into this new world of changing schools around. Thank you.
On deck is Fay Maugh.
Hi, I'm Katie Johnson Appleton. I'm a New Haven resident. I'm a selectman in New Haven. I'm alumni of Leland and Gray. I'm looking out at this room, and I'm seeing faces of fellow alumni, staff, et cetera, from that time. And I went to this school when there was a population of 450 kids in this building, grades seven through 12. Now there's less than 200. And a lot of things have changed, and my child does not live in this district. He goes to another school district. Part of that reason is because I already live a half an hour away from here. I live almost in Dover, and it's also a half an hour to go to Brown, but it doesn't matter much. Not for me. With kids up here, yeah, that's going to be a huge change, not just the kids. It's the parents, the parents supporting the kids to facilitate the things. And that has to be considered. Parents have jobs in various places that they're trying to juggle this. And there are single parents with two or three kids. All of those things matter. But the other part that matters is that we pulled the school districts out of the towns in some ways because it's no longer that telling. This year, this school district with a budget of $15 million was passed with less than 200 votes from all of the towns. And our, and our actual town budgets are $2.5 million or less. Wow, that is such a staggering number to have nobody taking the time to vote. What is going on? It's such huge money. It's most of our taxes. And I'd like you to think about that. Please put the vote back in town meeting or however you facilitated your town. Thank you.
So Fay is up, and the last name on the list on deck is Maxine Wells. And then we have, then we do online. Push from the top. We just slide the. We all have technology.
All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Fay Maugh. I live in Londonderry. And a lot of what I want to say really echoes what's been said, but I really understand that building more shared services and more efficient governance systems for our school system can help simplify things and lower costs, and that's really needed. And I want to echo what other people said about addressing healthcare within the system because it's not going to change fundamentally, no matter how we reshift and reappreciate everything if we don't address some of the foundational issues with the cost of school, which is the cost of healthcare. As the task force is putting together a proposal for legislature, I just, what I want to echo is please don't rip apart multi-town communities. In rural areas, our communities are multi-town. And how communities flow is really critical in rural areas. And in the, and that's so true in that I live in Londonderry and I grew up in East Dorset. And when I moved back here, it was moving back home. That's what I said, and that's what we all said. Even though my, the rest of my family lives down the mountain, you're up the mountain kids, down the mountain kids. And that's, that's how that community is organized. And the Conic and Green district has also been doing such important work for a number of years to try to address the issues of small rural towns and higher costs in equitable education already. So we're already coming up with consolidation plans and our regional middle school plan and trying to make those changes to make middle school more equitable for kids in our rural communities. And people are talking a lot about choice, and choice is really important in our community. But also, Burnburn acts as the public school. I didn't even know I went to an independent school when I went there. I thought it was just a really awesome public school. And, and that's how it functions for so many, so many of the communities. So it's not to be against public schools. I believe in public schools, and I love public schools. And the way that BBA functions in our community is as the public school. Thank you.
Folks online, I do want to say that it's eight o'clock, and we are committed to staying for an extra 30 minutes. If you're, if you have to leave, we won't be offended. Just make sure that you make the video. So I'm just grateful to everybody who was here. We'll thank you again, but if you have to leave.
Hello, my name is Maxine Wells. I live in New Haven, and I'm a supervisor here in Leland and Gray. I'm a part of varsity soccer, varsity basketball, ultimate disc, the theater department, and student council. When I look at Leland and Gray, I don't just see a school, I see a family. The community that we have grown is amazing, is energetic, supportive, and loving. This school has been in Townsend for more than, for 200 years. I'm proud to be part of it and don't know where I would have been if I didn't go here. Please don't forget about kids like me.
So we have a couple of hands up online. We're going to unmute you and turn on your camera. I'm hoping you can hear me, but we're going to unmute you and turn on your camera. And again, you have two minutes. Please state your name and the town that you're from. And then once you're unmuted, you can start the comments. And we're just going to appreciate everyone in the room who's calm and patient with us as we're working our technology now.
It's AG. I think they just need to unmute their mic. Their mic.
I think you can unmute yourself. AG. AG, I don't see your full name. But you can unmute yourself if you're ready to talk. You can turn your camera on.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Thank you. My name is Adam Gilbo. I recently retired out of the military after 25 years. I was born and raised in Wyndham County. And I can't love this state enough. That's why I came back home to give my kids the opportunity that I had. We moved specifically to Dover for the option, for the choice option. My son just started at BBA a couple months ago. Phenomenal school. I've met the faculty and staff there. It's hands down something I wish I had growing up. And I thought Wilmington was a great school when I went there. It had everything I could have imagined. Taking away the opportunity that the mountain schools have is going to do the children of this state a disservice. Aside from the, the driving factor or the unknowns that are currently out there, which are a lot, we got to remember, these high school kids are going to be driving all over Timbuktu through every single season here in Vermont. And now we're going to run the risk of injuries to and from school just because of the long distances. Aside from that, you're going to uproot them and send them off hour two, three hours to a school. It doesn't do right to the kids. Again, we specifically came back here for the education in this state and the choice option that it has. Please consider this when you guys are making your final vote. But taking away the option that parents and children currently have is not doing right by the state. They took away the option in '97 with Act 60 from all the towns with all the money. And the state managed it or mismanaged it. And we see where that led. Schools are closing everywhere. It is just not right. The state doesn't need to be involved in this at their level. It should be left up to the towns.
Thank you, Ellen. There are two more people with hands up online. Christine Lemke, I think. You're next.
Just bear with me. I just got to unmute.
Spotlight you and give you the opportunity to turn the mic on. Thanks. You can unmute yourself now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kristi Lemke. I have a four-year-old, and I live in London Derry. I've been following the redistricting task force, the public commission, trying to listen in as much as I can. And I'm seeing the changes that we're doing as a community. So I just want you to, remind you to consider what the school districts are currently doing to consolidate and improve student opportunities. And yeah, I chose to live in London Derry for the educational opportunities. I grew up in Jamaica, wanted to provide my daughter a little bit more than I had. And yeah, it definitely, whatever changes are made would definitely shift where we plan on sending her. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Rich Warner, you're next. Just give us a second to unmute your mic and enable your mic and enable your camera. And anyone else who is online that wants to put their hand up? I see one person has put their hand up. You should be able to turn your camera on and unmute.
Thank you. My name is Rich Warner. I graduated from Lelandin Gray also. I thought it was the greatest school in the world when I was there. There's a lot of really great schools. But anybody from the commission or the committee that's here, I implore you to do, drive up Route 30 and turn up Wyndham Hill and drive up to where the old Wyndham School, that's now closed, is. And one thing I think this committee really needs to consider when they're drawing a map is that Vermont isn't flat like the map is that we lay out on the table. The map has, you know, there's a lot of hills in this area. And anybody who wants to have a real fun ride that's never done it, sometime during a nice storm, you should drive down Wyndham Hill on Route 30 and see how well you do. I think, you know, Vermont's a unique place. You guys do not have an easy job. But, you know, consider the amount of time that kindergarten students are going to be having windshield time to where they will, you know, before they can get to the school. High school students maybe can go a little longer. But if you've ever driven a school bus with kindergarten kids, it's like herding sheep, and it's not a lot of fun. So just kind of consider those extra things when you're doing, doing your map. And we thank you for your service. And again, I implore you, find somebody in there. They'll tell you how to get to, they'll tell you how to get to Wyndham, and you'll have a real fun trip. Thank you.
Thank you. Nina, you're going to be on next. And then it looks like Travis has put their hand up. You're on deck. So be able to unmute and turn your camera on.
Hi. I'm Nina. I have a child at the Long Trail School in Dorset. And I just wanted to get out there for people who don't understand possibly how the independent school system works in our corner of Vermont. There is no public school in the Manchester area at all, public high school. And there has been a system of using an independent school as the de facto private school for a long, long time. You, I'm sure you people in the task force understand that Burn Burton has been in existence before the Department of Education even existed. And I would encourage you to make your best effort to maintain that system in areas of the state that have come to depend on them for many decades and not see it as a competition to the public schools, but as something that the regions use as their de facto public schools because of the nonexistence of public schools. And also consider that, I'm, I'm sure, and this is not only true of us, that it would be foolish to consider, for example, closing BBA, which has close to 1,000 students, and then spending tens of millions of dollars to build a new public high school would make very little sense. And so I hope that, for the sake of continuity and practicality, that the systems, like the BRSU and other boards and supervisory unions that have independent schools and it's as an option, will be allowed to continue that way as they have for many, many decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. It looks like Travis is up next. And that looks like our last, our last public comment tonight. Travis, just give us a second to unmute.
Hi there. Thanks for taking my comment. I hope everybody can hear me okay with our wonderful internet here in Vermont. I wanted to just briefly reiterate what so many folks have already said and point out that Vermont regularly ranks in the top five, sometimes even top three in the nation for elementary and high school education. This is, of course, based on small student teacher ratios and high per pupil spending. And this redistricting is in danger of radically undermining that great image. While changes to our education funding system are certainly needed, ruining our brand by taking a chainsaw to our current system instead of a scalpel is reputational suicide. There is already a dearth of CDL drivers for busing and what we will quote unquote "save" on teacher salaries by consolidating school districts. We will merely give to bus drivers while our kids spend an hour or more on a bus. Both locals and transplants will leave Windham, London Derry, Stratton, Peru, Land Grove, and Weston in droves if this mapping project succeeds in splitting our community in three different districts. As a teacher and a parent, I can anecdotally tell you that educational opportunities vis-à-vis school choice is one of the most important economic drivers in southern Vermont. Montpelier and Burlington do not have an adequate understanding of that impact on this region. Thank you.
So I just wanted to let you know that throughout the week, we have copied the link for this meeting so some of our community members who aren't following so closely can have easy access to this meeting. And I guess the ID changed at some point. So there's at least 20 folks, just on my Facebook newsfeed, who weren't able to attend this. So I just want you to know that we're all trying to keep everybody informed. And that, that was such a hindrance for a lot of people tonight. Yeah.
So I apologize for that. The staff person that was supposed to staff because the meeting had a family emergency and had to leave the country. So we had to not use her link and change it. We tried to spread the word and...
I do see the email from my school this morning that I missed at some point. But just wanted to let you know that there was probably a lot of people interacting.
So I apologize for that. And this Microsoft Teams meeting is being recorded. And so they can have access to that recording. After the fact, they can also have access to the survey. And then there's two more public hearings coming up.
Wonderful. And the links for those?
The links for those have been changed. For one other one had to be changed as well. So the website will have the most up-to-date link. So for God's forbid anything else happens, we hope it doesn't, look on the website because that would be where the most up-to-date information is. And then Christine, if you wouldn't mind putting up the slides again? If you can do that. I'll just talk about some next steps really quickly. And I think what we'd like to do is show the address if you want to make public comment directly to the task force that you didn't have an opportunity tonight. So the task force has another public hearing in Rutland on the 22nd.
I think we just went off. It's, that did, thank you.
The task force has another hearing, the 22nd, Rutland, 6th to 8th. Its next meeting is going to be held at Lewski High School. They've got a long six-hour meeting. And there'll be the final public hearing on the 28th at Lewski High School. As you heard, on the 28th, the district will be, the task force will be looking at three maps and then making recommendations about whether to continue to work with those maps between the 28th and the next meeting, which I believe is on November 10th. And so between the 28th and the 10th is a great time to look at the maps and add your comments. And on the 10th, they'll be taking one final look at the maps and making their recommendations. And then at their final meeting in November, on the 17th, they'll be talking about the report and what they want to say to the legislature. And I think that they're not just going to have a report that presents maps, but I think they're going to provide a lot of context. They're going to provide an overview of what's happened going around the state, listening to people from the limitations, as you've heard, the tight times, there have been those kinds of things. And I think the task force, from what I'm hearing, has my role as the facilitator, really wants to hope that the report will be an opportunity to educate legislators and the community about the complexity of some of these issues in addition to just having maps. So with that, thank you all so much for coming and being with us tonight and sharing your thoughts. It was really great to hear everybody, and we just appreciate your care and concern for your community and for taking the time to let the task force know what's on your mind. So thank you. I also think we need to thank Lelandin Gray and the young folk who are out there helping team and the young people who spoke to them and stuff.